Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We begin city council meeting as always with a prayer and a pledge, so if you do choose to join me, please bow your head in prayer. Gracious Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity that we have here as council members to serve our community. We ask you be with us during our deliberations. We ask you to be with all our city employees, keep them safe and in your will, be with all our citizens. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Cork, roll call, please.
Councilmember Millen.
Here.
Councilmember Tibbs.
Present.
Councilmember Bench is pre-excused. Mayor Protem Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have eight members present and one excused.
I have the attendance for the audience, which by the way is 90 percent of Vargas' family out there. We appreciate that very much. The rest of you though, no cheering, booing, or rude or obnoxious behavior, and turn off or silence all your electronic devices now. So we take special counsel members, let's check our phones, make sure that they are in appropriate mode for our needle. Mine is not, and I know it would've went off. Okay. Madam Cork.
Yes, Mayor, I have some announcements. The city's waste convenience station is open to city residents the second Saturday of the month from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it's at the Public Works Building located off the Holland Avenue entrance. Residents may dispose of items such as building materials and recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. The next collection day is this Saturday, July 14th. Candidates filing deadlines for November 6th general election. We have three full-term positions and one partial term for Saginaw School Board District. Their deadline is July 23rd at 4:00 p.m., and for city council, for four positions, the deadline is August 7th at 5:00 p.m. Candidates must file for these positions at the city clerk's office. And this evening, we have a proclamation recognizing the 50th anniversary of Vargas &amp; Sons Tortillas.
Okay, and at that, I'll have the Vargas family just remain seated right there, if you would please, just right there. It's our great honor to this. City of Saginaw proclamation. Whereas Vargas &amp; Sons Tortillas is celebrating 50 years of business in the city of Saginaw, Vargas &amp; Sons was established in 1968 by Alberto Vargas and his late wife Pauline, opening their first store on Wadsworth Avenue and later moving it to its current home at the corner of South Park and Federal. And whereas Mr. Vargas, a Texas native who never goes far without his signature cowboy hat, remembers his humble beginnings when he had to hand-deliver tortillas to stores from the family station wagon. And whereas today, Vargas &amp; Sons is best known for their taco bread, also called tortillas, Vargas offers a wide variety of products in their store located in the heart of downtown Saginaw. They make over 1,000 tortillas daily, shipping and delivering to customers and businesses near and as far away as Germany. And whereas Alberto and Pauline established the business with the intent to create a future for their 11 children, after 50 years, it is still operated by the Vargas children and grandchildren with Senior Vargas, as he is known to their customers, still keeping watch by their side. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members and the citizens of this community, do hereby extend this appreciation of esteem and gratitude to Vargas &amp; Sons Tortillas for their profound success in the city of Saginaw over the past 50 years. We congratulate Vargas &amp; Sons and extend our very best wishes for continued success in all their future endeavors. In witness herof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the Saginaw to be affixed this ninth day of July in the year of our Lord 2018. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Mayor Protem Floyd Clark. Councilmembers Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Millen, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond Al Tibbs, and our city manager, Mr. Timothy Morales. Congratulations, and we would like to come forward and present.
Good evening.
Albert Vargas Jr., and on behalf of the Vargas family, just like thanks everybody for showing up, and thank you Mayor Browning, city council members, you, thank you very much. So I'd like to say.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you to the Vargas family for being the outstanding citizens that we have here in our community. Thank you so much. Madam Cork.
Mayor, you are at remarks of council.
Okay, and I'll remind the council members that you have a time limit also of five minutes, and we should begin with Councilman John Millen down the end.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll start with the easiest thing to remember from the last week are July 4th fireworks. The list is too long to thank everyone who helps work on that project, but I did have two things I wanted to mention. One was to thank Covenant Hospitals for coming forward late in the game with a matching donation for everything collected from the 4th through the 6th of July. I know that helped carry some of the shortfall in funding that was mentioned in the press during the past week. So, and our standout performer always for the fireworks in helping with the flag raising on the Court Street Bridge is Bill Georges from Mike's Recker, and he does a lot of things for this community that are behind the scenes, we don't see, that one's a little more obvious, but I wanted to thank him again for that. And then there was something after the 4th of July I think is worth mentioning. It was in the press on July 5th. I wanted to thank Saginaw citizen, Mr. Mark Howard, for doing something about something he saw and cleaning up some of the debris left over from, shall we say, private fireworks being shot off prior to the main event. I happened to drive by the same location he cleaned up, and I thought, gee, I hope somebody cleans that up today. I, you know, not having time to stop myself, and by noon of that same day, Mr. Howard had jumped in and taken care of that particular situation. I wanted to give him kudos on that one. And this is actually a question to complete my remarks. For the city clerk, did we go back to the 10 to 2 hours for the convenience station rather than 8 to noon?
I did announce 10 to 2, didn't I? Yes, 8 to noon.
Okay, we are still on 8 to noon.
Yes, sir. Thank you for catching that, Councilman.
And that completes my remarks.
Okay, down the other end.
Go pass the lady.
Okay.
I would like to personally thank the Vargas family for your business that you have in the city. I know you guys said 50 years, but I know it seems like I've been eating Vargas taco bread for well over 55 years. I really appreciate you guys having a business in the city. I'm gonna see if I can get one of those shirts, and I'm gonna wear it proudly. I'd like to mention too that Draymond Green just mentioned the Vargas Bread Company on national TV talking about how good the bread is, and I know I've ate taco bread in Texas and Atlanta and the North Carolinas, and nobody can cook bread like the Vargas family. So I'd like to personally thank you guys for the work that you've done here in the city of Saginaw. Thank you very much. That's about all my time to say.
All right, good evening, everybody. Just a few remarks. Of course, I want to thank the Vargas family for being in business for 50 years. That speaks a lot, and I think it speaks to the spirit of our city that we're tenacious, and I know that every year was not easy of those 50 years, so we thank you guys for the contributions that you contribute to our community and for being a prime example, that small business, it's possible, that things can, you know, things can happen, and to take the entrepreneurial spirit. So thank you guys so much to your family for being in business and everything that you do for our community, so thank you guys so much. I also want to extend my condolences to the Nickelberry family in the passing of Mr. Mitchell, the founder of Word Up Magazine. It's just so sad and so tragic, so if we could, that would be great if we could do something for that family.
We can do.
Yes. Also, I had the opportunity to visit the Riverfront Saginaw Painted Piano Project. I've been playing piano since I was four, but I got the opportunity to meet some people from outside our community who came specifically for that. So we're attracting some people to downtown and to Old Town and throughout that area, so it was great to meet with them, and come to find out he is one of the vice presidents of Next Tier Automotive, so that was really, really awesome. We've had a great amount of fantastic events from Old Town Lawn Chair Film Festival, the Eddie Band, of course, the fireworks, and so many great other things. But I did want to announce that every Thursday throughout the rest of this month, July and August, I'm doing community conversations. I usually do those at businesses all across the community, but I wanted to go directly to some of our people. So I've been getting on the Starz bus every Thursday with a cooler full of water and just talking to some of our people about what we can do about increasing access and mobility in our community, so it's a pretty cool idea, I think, and anybody's welcome to join me on a Thursday starting at 10:00. Also, I just wanted to say it's been really hot, so make sure that we check on our seniors, and for those who don't have air conditioning, take advantage of some of the public places that we have, like our libraries, and also the splash park that's available, so.
That's all here. Okay.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I'm sorry, to the Vargas family, kudos, kudos. Couldn't have made it all these years without the taco bread, so I truly do thank you. Our family thanks you because we live on you. The last couple of weeks has been really exciting. I had the opportunity to go to the Michigan Municipal League Conference Retreat. At that time, I was appointed president of the Elected Official Academy, which is our educational academy. Saginaw, we gonna get on the map. I'm determined that we are going to get MML into this city. I mean, I'm sending out a challenge now to all of my fellow council people who will be remaining. If you do nothing else, you need to get in and at least complete your first level. Your first level will help you so much. It has helped me tremendously, tremendously. And so I know that the fireworks was good, I didn't stay long because it was too hot, but it was a nice time. It was a nice time, and so I just want to thank everybody for coming out, supporting all the activities in Saginaw. And once again, I'm gonna piggyback on Councilman Bryant, please check on the elderly, please check on the elderly. They won't let you know that they don't have air, so just check on them to make sure that they're okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. And there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vargas, on behalf of myself and my family, I want to say thank you. I know your father's leaving, but we have two senior Vargas's here today, so, and the whole family.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, a 50-year anniversary is a golden anniversary, so in this case, it's a golden family and a golden history for Saginaw, so thank you. It's our privilege and honor to be able to recognize all the years you put in here. Having said that, I'm gonna move on, so thank you again. Larry Brethour from, he's the president of the Friends of Hoyt Park, mentioned in an email to us that Hoyt Park, the Hoyt Park Boys and Girls Youth Baseball, has 24 teams ages 4 to 17, starting July 10th on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, if anyone's interested in attending those games. Also, there will be an international fast pitch softball tournament there on July 20th and 22nd, so they're doing wonderful things at Hoyt Park, the Friends of Hoyt Park, and we have to give them kudos for all they're doing. They'll even have teams from Canada and several other states at that international fast pitch softball tournament. I do want to mention also to Phil Carwatt and his staff, I seen a lot of new paving done in the city, and they're doing, Mr. Manager, as well. What's being done is really a big, big help. It's just, I don't say it's a patch because there's so much that needs to be done, but what we're seeing is certainly good, and it's helping, and the Johnson Street particularly was a big, a big project to get done, so I want to give thanks to all the workers who are making that possible. Mentioning the July 4th fireworks, they were tremendous, I had an opportunity to watch them, and I agree with Councilmember Millen about thanking Covenant Hospital with their matching funds offer. It was a tremendous help. For those who don't know, and there probably aren't, probably are not many by now, but just in case, the SVC Marketplace is now open, and the reason I mention it up, and so is the farmer's market, but that means you can buy local. So everybody out there, use our own farmer's market, use our own SVR Marketplace, and buy Saginaw. That's, we're here, we're coming back, and we want you to use our city, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
You betcha. Councilman Tibbs.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, we try not to repeat ourselves up here, but 50 years is worth repeating, so thank you, Mr. Vargas and the Vargas family for your contribution to the city. Also, I was just, I was just curious, and from my point of view, it appeared that the city was pretty quiet as far as fireworks, for the most part. Remember, not too long ago, fireworks seemed to have started two weeks before 4th of July and didn't end until two weeks after the 4th of July, so I was just curious if the, I don't know if it's a PSA that we did, did that open at all, but I was just curious to know if there's any type of numbers we could show and anything we can contribute to the reduction. I don't know if it was something that the police department did, or if the fire department did, but I was just curious, and so maybe that's something we can, we can repeat going forward, because that was something that we used to get quite a few visits during our city council about residents voicing a complaint about fireworks outside of the state law, the state law, so if that's possible, I think that would be helpful, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you know, I'll repeat, thank you so much to the Vargas family. You know, the business is tremendous, that's one thing, but it's also the family, and the family in the community, and that's tremendous for us. We have so many wonderful families that are in business and not in business in our city. Acknowledge that and congratulate them, and hope for another 50 years. So with that, I see my chief in the back there, I would like to congratulate our officers for going out and meeting with our retired Saginaw police officer, Henry Wickowski, badge number 100 on his 100th birthday. And I don't want to tell you how old I am, but I've worked with Henry for eight years before he retired. He was one of my mentors. In fact, Mr. Vargas, working with Henry downtown, we worked downtown for many years, and so it was great, and it was great to see him on television, we had some good coverage, but more importantly, our officers went out there and personally acknowledged him and shared in his birthday celebration. So turning 100 on his badge number was pretty cool. In case you're wondering, my badge number is 125, so doubt if I'm gonna make 125, I'd be, if I could get that first number, it'd be all right, but, and to look as good as he does and be able to be as sharp as he is, so anyways, I think that was tremendous. With that, that ends my comments. Madam Cork.
We are now at reports from the city manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, and I would also congratulate the Vargas family 50 years in operation.
I know it's hard to get out, I know.
Last one.
A thousand units, that's pretty impressive, a thousand tortillas a day, so congratulations, and continue to ask to answer Councilman Tibbs' question. I don't believe that we did any additional fireworks enforcement this year beyond what we've normally done. Report we've done in the past, Chief Van Leeu will look at any fires that occurred and see if potentially anything was a result of fireworks. I don't know that we had any incidents like that this year. To my view, the new, not new, but the fireworks law when it was changed, I think, put a lot on local units. I mean, it was a state law, increased sales, changed days for use, and provided no enforcement on the state's end with utilizing any of the revenue that's generated, but I think, you know, obviously, if we do get calls, we'll respond to them in the order of which we can, but I don't believe we had any, any special details over the past week. I would also congratulate the Boys and Girls Club, they had their ribbon cutting, and the YMCA Kids Campus, they're groundbreaking since the last meeting. I was very impressed with that joint fundraising campaign that had quite a start to that campaign that Mr. Herb Spence talked about during his comments. And also, I would congratulate SVRC and the new Marketplace, I think they did a great job. Really wonderful event and a lot of participation from the public, and it's still pretty busy if you go down there now. I would also mention that city departments and commissions have taken an interest in this as well. The SEDC does have an investment program there where they're doing small business loans that cater to that, so Yolanda Jones and her staff did, did come up with it, and I think that's a good service. And also, I would let you know that the MML Community Excellence Award is in play for SVRC Marketplace. If you go to the MML website, you can vote on that. Right now, they're, I think they're in the top five, so we can vote every 24 hours to get a chance. I'd also mention that you might have seen more about the Michigan Lead and Copper rules. Our staff at the Water Department and Public Services is on top of that, and they have some more informational meetings coming up at some point. We could probably provide council with an update during the meeting about some of those changes and the way that we're addressing them. I think that our staff is, is out ahead of this and has some pretty innovative ideas on dealing with these rules, so at some point, we'll have, can address council on that. I was also reading the, some of the key takeaways from the Mackinac Policy Conference, Mackinac Policy Conference, and looking at what's going on downtown in Riverfront Saginaw area. One of the key takeaways that they had was related to urban, one of their topics was cities must be the engine for development, and one of the key takeaways was urban centers are economic drivers, however, without renewed investment in infrastructure, companies, employees will leave, so I think that's something for us to think about as we look at some of the issues downtown. We probably do need to think about investing in the riverfront, and those of you who went to the ribbon cutting probably noticed, we do need to invest in some parking, doing a little bit of planning with that, and that's gonna cost some money, so our staff at the city will be trying to come up with some innovative ways to work on some of those The Michigan Department of Treasury did deny our waiver regarding the PA 202, which is underfunded status for pensions and OPEB liabilities. We did think that that was probably a pretty strong possibility, but we'll continue to work with the Treasury on that issue. We'll have to submit a plan to deal with those costs, future costs, that will also involve likely setting aside funds for those future expenses, and, but we will also plan on doing an update to council regarding that issue as we work through it with Treasury. Few of the items this evening are blanket purchase orders, Communication 8 through 13, our blanket purchase orders for the fire department, mostly dealing with vehicles, and those totaling about $138,000. And then we have Council Communication 14 for the motor pool, which is $304,015, which is $67,000. So the reason for the blanket purchase orders is to streamline the process and get primarily vehicles out as quickly as possible, because we do, we do need to have that. Most of the purchases, I'll correct that, the purchases for the bigger equipment often will be over $2,000, and there's not much we can do to fire apparatus for less than $2,000, and snow plows and et cetera. Our passenger vehicles, police vehicles, and trucks, pickup trucks, typically those would be under the $2,000 threshold anyway. However, one of the things that we do in finances, we aggregate those purchases, so that you can't go and have multiple purchases at one vendor for less than $2,000 and have it over $2,000. Therefore, we developed this method for approving blanket purchase orders. With these purchase orders, we'll still work to get the best price, we'll get quotes from the multiple vendors that are on here so that we can get the lowest price possible. Council Communication 14 is related to parts primarily that we would buy, so we'll work with those various vendors to see where we could get the best price on those parts. 15 is related to services that are typically outsourced, the body shop services, so you see a couple different body shops on there. The council communications note that there is an increase from the previous year, so we wanted to do this with the budget for the current fiscal year that we just entered because it reflects what we're actually spending. So in previous years, we had a lower budget, however, we did several budget adjustments and budget transfers to account for the cost. So this year, we are reflecting the actual cost initially, so we don't have to do all those transfers. Not to say that we will spend those total funds, because you'll remember that you did approve purchases in the police department for Detective Bureau vehicles, those will be all-new vehicles, and I believe it's eight patrol vehicles, that should reduce the general fund portion cost to the fleet because of the newer vehicles and anything, or most things would be warranty work if it's a more expensive car. But we did want to try to reflect the costs that we have seen in previous years, so that we don't have Yolanda and the departments trying to locate funds throughout the budget, and that was, that was something that Phil and Yolanda worked on through the budget preparation process. With that, that concludes the management update.
Mr. Manager, could we get an update in the future on the? Mr. Manager, could we get an update in the future on the Rifkin property and what's happening with the cleanup and such? The Rifkin property, looking for an update. Don't need it tonight, but we'd like to have an update, if you don't mind, in the future. Is there any other questions for the manager?
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, if we get an update on the Riverfront Development, I haven't, I personally haven't seen anything. If they plan on anything, it would be nice to know so we can spread the word about what's coming to Saginaw, maybe we can get some more momentum. I mean, it seems to me like we have committees to do things, but they don't get the information out, and it's so quiet about it and stuff, and I would like to know. I think the city council shouldn't know the Riverfront Development Corporation is doing anything. I had mentioned a couple of years ago about the fireworks funding, and I was hoping that we could ask for money at the country thing they have there, at the Jibway Island, any major event that they have at Jibway Island, and I think we should be there trying to collect some money for the fireworks. We have, I don't know how many people we have, I know Saginaw only have like 50,000 people, and we have way more than 50,000 people in the city watching the fireworks. And when those other people come into town for those other events, I think they should pay for them, so maybe we should, we should ask for the money. I mean, we asked for it at the end, why not ask for it in the front? So I don't know, Mr. The manager, if you can talk to whoever in charge of that, if we can make it happen. Appreciate it. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Manager? Go ahead. Question?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I have a little information. Councilman Balls would appreciate it.
No. Questions for our manager?
Nope.
Okay, then, well, you can address that at the end if you'd like.
Okay, that's fine.
No, I don't mean to cut you off.
No.
We don't need to get into a debate. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk.
You are now at the consent agenda.
And I am to announce that the agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city's website and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, we are at reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointments, board and commission members.
And council members, is there any verbal reports that you would like to give from any of the boards or commissions that you are currently seated on?
Just as a note, the Riverfront Development Commission has not met in June and will not meet in July, so there's not too much, aside from the Painted Piano Project from Art and About to report from that. But also, I like the question that you had about Rifkin, because we met on June 26th with the Planning Commission to approve their next phase. So those minutes will be coming out once they're compiled from the clerk, and then she sends them out to us from the Planning Commission meeting. So we will receive those, and they are making forward progress, so.
That's from the Planning Commission?
That's correct.
Not the Riverfront?
That is correct, yep.
Okay.
And then the other thing with Planning Commission is we did approve the site plans for the Quick Stop Party Store on Weber and Washington. They're gonna be adding about an extra 1,000 square feet. So those are the two things that have come from Planning Commission, and we'll see those notes soon.
Any other reports from any boards?
Just a meeting that we're not having. The Brownfield Authority is not having a July meeting. We have no current business. We think we will be having a special meeting before our next regular meeting in October, though, when we have something coming before us. Keep you informed.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Madam Clerk, we have appointments?
Yes. Do you want a motion to approve all leaving room for exceptions?
Yes, can we?
What's your position?
Yes, all of them.
So I just need a motion. It's been moved?
Support.
It's been supported to approve the mayoral appointments and reappointments. So any further discussion? Any exceptions? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
We are at motions and miscellaneous business.
Motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to go into closed session.
I'd like to close.
Or what? We had revised agenda to consider litigation.
It moved and supported that the council go into closed session. Pending litigation per MCL 15.268 (e) period. All in favor? All we gotta do, roll call. Thought you got me, didn't you?
Councilmember Tibbs?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench is absent. Mayor Proton Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Humphreys?
Yes.
Councilmember Milne?
Yes.
Mayor Browning?
Aye, Brian.
So we have eight yes votes.
Okay, let's go in closed session.